I'll rise. Hear ye, hear ye, the Hamlin County Commission is now in session. Dr. Bobbi Hoddin presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank everyone for their attendance tonight. I'll call on Commissioner Tim Horner for the prayer.
Let us pray. Father, we thank thee for this day and for many blessings you give us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this county, most of all, for the opportunity to serve you. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us all here tonight. Forgive us where we fail you. These favors we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's face the flag. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Commissioners, if you will, silence your phones, turn your mics on, and at this time, if you'll punch your attendance in.
Hit the present button.
Hit the present button.
You don't.
I don't. Took care of it.
Good girl.
Yours is already done. They have 12 present, two absence.
Okay. We're open for business. Looking at our agenda tonight for June 26, 2025, we have no recognitions at this time, so we'll move into item number two, our public comments. Remember, you will have three minutes. I will tell you that if you look down to item seven, we will be recessing, and we'll have another public hearing, so you'll have another chance to talk on that topic. Otherwise, we'll start with anyone that wants to speak. Three minutes on non-agenda items. We'll come to the podium, please.
Illinois Joe Stevens Road. Like to talk about freedom of speech. That's a, was allegedly a placard. Many of you voted and said that was a placard. We need to sue citizens wearing that. Didn't end too well. But the other thing is you need, I'd like to ask that you go back and have rules committee meetings and quit telling people that they cannot tape a meeting with a small handheld camera or a small handheld phone. I have a friend down in Loudoun County. She's been taping building, built meetings like I had been for years and years and years. They have never told her she can't tape a public meeting. Please have your rules committee meet. Let's vote again on that and see if you still feel that people should not be able to videotape your meetings. When we had this lawsuit, Chairman Cutshaw then said he just wanted to find out what a placard was. Does anybody know yet? I never saw a definition. Nothing came out of that court case to define a placard. That's in your rules still. That needs to be looked at. So please, the other thing I would ask as far as your rules, please consider rotating membership on committees like Jefferson County does. Even commissioners are on finance committee for a year, then they're on public services or something like that. Odd commissioners are on public services for a year, then they switch. But there's way too much silencing of people or attempts to silence them. And I know they can talk during the committee meeting, but how about being a member, a named member of a committee, instead of excluding so many people?
Thank you for your time.
That's it.
Anyone else wish to speak on non-agenda items? State your name and your address.
My name is Fred Moralee. I reside at 2528 Brandy Drive out in Russellville. I've been retired from the federal government for 34 years. I retired here. This is my retirement. I love the area. I was at the Gray Smokies. I saw the area. I chose this to retire to. I'm going to start in the beginning. We started with a small flood on my property, and I started to look into it to see what was going on. Deerwood Shadows, a development, was put in. Mayor Britton was involved in this. I'm going to just jumble it all together. My street is below its subgrade of Elisha. Physically, this street cannot drain. So I looked at all the original drawings, and according to the development plot, somebody in the county passed and released a bond from the developer saying that the roads were put in correctly. Well, I'm here to tell you they weren't. And I've got pictures of probably 300,000, 400,000 gallons of water sitting on my front lawn. That takes weeks to drain. Mayor Britton got involved. He tried to clean the bottom. That didn't work. They tried to take out dirt, put gravel in. That didn't work. They came up with this great idea to put in an injection well down to bedrock, drilled another 100 feet, let the water just go. Worked great until the well collapsed. Now, I don't have a flood problem no more. I want to thank you for that, but I have major sinkholes on my property, and one of them is getting real close to my house. I retired here. I don't want to die in that house that I retired with the house around me and the bottom of a sinkhole. So I'm here to ask somebody for help because I failed with Mayor Britton's office that started, I mean, I've got, if you guys want, I've got emails going back and forth. I got pictures going back and forth. I spoke to the new mayor at an event in my Veterans Chapter. Rick was there. His hands, they're telling me, whose hands is it, besides the good Lord's? Honestly, whose hands is it? I can't live like this anymore. I can't even sell the house if I wanted to move and say I'm done. Would you buy a house with a 60 by 40 sinkhole in it that's four feet deep, five feet deep, and getting deeper every day, and small sinkholes coming off of it? I don't know what to do. My hands are tied. Do I contact a lawyer? I figured, I'll try this. Maybe somebody can give me an answer. That's all I'm looking for, is the problem that the county caused to be fixed. Is that asking for too much? That's all I got to say.
Could I ask you a question? I know you gave your name and address, but could I have that again, please?
It's Fred Moralee, M-O-R-R-E-A-L-E.
M-O-R-R-E-L-E?
E-A-L-E. Address is 2528 Brandy Drive.
What was the street?
Brandy, B-R-A-N-D-I Drive.
Is that Russellville?
That is Russellville.
And your first name one more time. I apologize, Chairman Hawn.
F-R-E-E.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time. Anyone else have, want to speak on non-agenda items?
Good evening, guys. Chris Black, 7335 Evelyn Circle, Talbot, and 13th District. This has been a long time coming, and I prayed on it, and I thought about it for going on three years now, and I think it's time that I say it. The chickens have finally come home to roost, it appears, and tonight, we're going to be hewing this property tax thing, and that's all fine and good, I guess. But I would request that this commission, Mayor Cutshaw as well, if you can, go back within the emails that I sent to Mayor Britton's office from 2017 dating to 2022, calling for the adoption of basic austerity measures across county government to include the adoption of an anti-nepotism policy, which, had it been adopted in 2022, would have led to the county saving approximately $750,000 in duplicitous salaries alone. Additionally, I would just, you know, ask you guys to think about how it would feel, and you guys are all taxpayers as well, but how would it feel if you were on a limited income, as so many people that I've talked to here recently about this mess are, receiving a social security check once a month, maybe a small pension, things of that nature, and you've seen your will tax go up within the past year? Now, you've seen property tax reassessments, which happen across the state, and that's normal, too, but, and tonight, you're, you know, thinking about reassessing or re-fixing the levy, if you will, for property taxes. It's just, it's not good, guys. I know our county's growing, and with that, we face a lot of stress on our roads. We face a lot of stress on infrastructure beyond those roads, and that those things have to be fixed. I think every one of us in this room and every one of us in this county understand that. But at what point are you guys going to be willing to say enough is enough? Folks like me, we can get out here, we can send letters, we can email the mayor's office, we can email our commissioners, we can, you know, hold rallies, we can even run for office, which God willing, I don't have to do again. But, you know, please, step up, do more, and think about the people who these decisions affect. Look, we needed a new jail. We did. Didn't have to be that thing, but we needed one. But there has to be some level of basic austerity that this commission can adopt and move forward with. The people of Hamlin County have truly just about had enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items? I see none, so we'll move down to agenda items. Anybody want to speak on agenda items? Come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Hello. Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Bryant Frankford. I'm from 733 Wooddale Road, Morristown, District 12. I'm a lifelong resident of Morristown. Was born here. And this is in reference to the certified tax rate that is going to go up, and I'm just asking that we do not adopt it unless we have a public referendum on it. It has come to my attention that in 2022, for anyone who can't see this, that some local Democratic candidates took a stand and predicted the necessity of a property tax in addition to the possibility of an increasing will tax, both of which have happened in the last six to eight months, less than three years from when it was promised that it would not occur. So to reiterate, this is real simple. I don't want to waste any of your time, but I'm just going to use this minute. We should not adopt exceeding the certified tax rate unless put to a public referendum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan Brooks. I live at 4201 Wip, Acre Circle. I am here to discuss this property tax increase. I understand that the new certified rate is somewhere around 1, according to the state. I'm not 100% sure about that. I do know that in the equalization statute, that they cannot raise my taxes based on a reassessment and a reevaluation of property. So with that being said, it's left up to the county and particularly the county commissioners what that new rate will be. If it's at 1.20, I just estimated that my property taxes would go up by 8%. Now, that seems like it's not very much between your own social security and a limited income, and you know that many, many families here are struggling to make it from week to week. Then we need to give consideration of what that new tax rate will be and why we need that new tax rate. So I'm here to ask you to be diligent in your resolve to give us a new tax rate because it does not just include you guys, it includes all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
Hello, my name is James Cox, 610 Center Street, District 3. I'd just like to echo the other comments from the two other gentlemen that came forward on the increase in tax rate. I would love to see the committee reject the Resolution 2510 today through 2514 and let the dust settle on the reassessment. If my math serves me right, my county property taxes are going to roughly almost double on the amount with the new assessment rates here in the city and in the county. I live in the city. So please let the dust settle before we do any other tax rate resolution or revision. That's what I'd like to ask for my district rep. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We have anyone else non-agenda, I mean, excuse me, agenda items?
My name's Robert Short. I see 322 Gilbert Street. Also have a piece of property in the county, 419 Pine Brook. I think this is maybe on the agenda item, but it's to the trash fund or the specialty solid waste. Under, I own a vacant piece of property, and I'm being charged, and as many other people are being charged for a service and being denied the service. In my opinion, that's theft. So you've got the county being charged for denying me a trash. Then, so on base upon taxes, I'm paying it for the county because I have property in the city, then I'm being doubled again for a service that's not being provided. If it's not being provided, that's theft, and it's just a lazy way of doing accounting for sanitation.
Thank you for your comments. I apologize. Hey, I'm human. Excuse me? No, thank you. Agenda items, anyone else?
Illinois Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to talk about the tax levy resolution in particular and the fact that how do we know what the projection is? You've got blanks in that resolution. Person would have to know a lot of the math of this and what's what and what the certified rate is and to be able to figure out what it is you're going to vote on today. So I really think more information needs to be out there about the proposed tax increase for both, for all the funds. Of course, you have items plugged in for the schools and for the debt, but it just says TBD to be determined on the general fund and on the sanitation. And I know Mr. Horner knows that there was a meeting of the Solid Waste Board about Friday a week ago and Friday, last Friday, and they voted to increase the tipping fees. Well, that comes back to you. I don't know if you're going to try and raise the sanitation rate because of that or how much, because there's, there's been no discussion of that openly in an open meeting, other than what happened at the solid waste board. So I would like to echo what has been said before. I think you need to look at things more carefully, and I think the public needs to be more informed about what's going on up here. How do you come up here and talk about a tax rate when it's not in the packet? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
Gwen Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. How come some people can say amen, but others can't? And they're called down for it. I don't appreciate that. That's respect to person. I believe in amen, but if one can say it, everybody should be allowed to say it and not be called down. It's kind of like when I went to school. They didn't like it, they'd call you down, even if you was right. Well, I don't want a property tax increase. I don't want one. I don't think we deserve one. I don't go to the jail. Why do I want to visit the jail? I try to behave myself, and I'm tired of paying for people that don't. I'm on a fixed income myself. I don't like the roads that goes on up here. I don't, and I got a right to say that because I'm a taxpayer. I told Mr. Long the other day, I did not want a property tax increase. I'm telling you again, and I'm telling my county commissioner, I don't want a property tax increase, because you know why? I don't get anything. I don't even get my roads fixed, even after we had a will tax increase. You know, I don't know when the public's going to get tired of it and really come up here and let you all know how they feel. And I don't know if it'll do any good or not, but it sure would tickle me if they tell you how they felt.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
8220 East Andrew Johnson Highway. I'm really worried about the taxes for our elderly folks in my neck of the woods, or well, anywhere, actually. A lot of mine, it's agriculture out there. A lot of them, they didn't work a job and get some kind of big social security. They didn't. And a lot of the people that I've spoke to around me, they're having to choose between having a roof, eating cat food, or their life sustaining meds. And I'm sorry, that's, that's not fair. People should be able to, be able to afford those things, but I mean, I know stuff is high everywhere, but I'm just really worried about the people that, you know, their income, their fixed income isn't like if they worked a job and got social security or whatever. These are farmers. I mean, they've, you know, they've grown food for us, I'm sure, at some point, and they just don't have the income that someone that worked like a factory job or whatever kind, so just kindly keep these little folks in your mind when you're making this decision, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on agenda items?
Chris Black, once again. I just want to read you guys something from the Citizen Tribune on July 17 of 2022. This comes directly from Mayor Britton. "We're a diversified economy. I think our community is very well positioned to weather the storm of whatever economic downturn there is." Britton said that he doesn't see the county's proverbial glass as half-full, he sees it as three-quarters full. I feel really good about where we are. I really do. Three and a half years later, guys, three and a half years later, we now have seen, again, a will tax increase, seen property tax reassessment. Now, we're looking at increasing the property tax again. I've heard many of you make the argument that Hamlin County's property tax, even with the increase that's being proposed, would still be among the lowest in East Tennessee. That's great. It really is great. But the question that I have for this commission is, look at the rest of the counties in East Tennessee. Most of them have community health clinics. Hamlin? Nope. Most of them have a community center or community centers for their individual commission districts, and they're not as fancy as Morristown Landing, they don't have to be, but little places to have community meetings. Hamlin County? Nope. Most of them have multiple public parks. Hamlin County? One, Cherokee Park, that very few people go to unless it's the Fourth of July or something Most of them have at least some limited sewer infrastructure. Most of Hamlin County? Nope. But at least if you're outside of the city. Most of them have, you know, plans to increase their lane mile paving every year. Hamlin County's is very limited. Look, I understand. The goal should not be at any time for Hamlin County to become Knox County. God, please, no. Nor should the goal for Hamlin County be to adopt austerity measures that put us in, you know, the likes of maybe Granger County, where there aren't as many paved roads and the ones that are have mashed pot holes. But, you know, three and a half years ago, many of you on the commission, when I was calling this out, told me that I was making it up, that we wouldn't have to do these things. And I've asked multiple times whether anyone would be willing to retract that statement, sit down, have a conversation, possibly apologize. I'm still hearing crickets. You know, again, a lot of people in this county don't have a ton of money, and they can't afford these increases. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have anyone else on agenda items? Thank you. Now move down to item three, 3A. We have appointments to the Morristown-Hamlin Library Board. Commissioners, if you look over in your packets, you'll find those names that we are to consider. No, thank you. I know I have it somewhere. Thank you. The names to be considered, there are three of those. We have Chris Katz to fill his first term, which ends on June 30 of 2028. We have Kim Fox, her term ending the same date. Then we have Linda Rains, also ending on June 30 of '28. Those are the three names that are on the list, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint those three people to the Library Board, please.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion on any of these or questions? Mr. Neesmith?
Well, we'd be taking three people off the board if there's additional people on the board.
I'm assuming these are, they're people rotating off.
Rotating off?
I'm, I'm assuming that. I have nothing here to indicate. You've got the same sheet that I do. I'm assuming these are just the people rotating off. Thank you. Okay. They're rotating off. That's been confirmed. Mr. Neesmith, you get that?
Rotating off?
Yes, sir.
We need to write that, put that down on here so we know.
Yeah, it would. It would have been nice. But we've got the expert here, so we're, we're good. Anything else? That's all I have. All right. Ms. Green?
Point of services. We've asked several times about the, our website having these boards and when the terms started and when the terms ended. It would make it easier for the taxpayers to keep up with, as well as some of us commissioners that can't keep right with it. So I would, again, ask that you, at some point, consider doing that. And I know that's not the discussion you want to hear, but it's long overdue.
Well, how do you want him to do that? You said.
I would assume the mayor's office has folks that are quite capable of that, sir.
I, I know.
Well, they take care of our Facebook accounts. They post to the website.
Okay, that's fine. Do we have any other discussion? We have none? Let's vote the motion. Let's vote to motion.
Eleven yeas, one nays.
Thank you. Move down to item four. Counting on County Rules Committee Chairman Thomas Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Harville. Any discussion? I will vote to motion. Ms. Green?
Is that adding what's in the red below to that, or does that come in the second part, sir?
It's the second part.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 4B is the approval of the regular calendar items. As you should have at your station, everyone had an update as two additions to the finance committee. The first being 9D11, which is Budget Amendment 101, multiple categories. And again, that is, I think, Ms. Amanda, just some accounting cleanups and such for And then item 9F, which is Amendment Number 1 to the AI document, A101-2017 with Construction Partners LLC and Hamblen County. And this is to add them to the committee, to be brought up and voted on later in the meeting. But I make a motion that we approve the regular calendar with these additions.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Doty?
We have a second. Mr. Long?
Do we have any discussion? No new monies involved here, just some accounting cleanup.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
Okay, motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty. Have no, nothing to be removed from the consent calendar this month. Move down to item 6A. Vote on our consent calendar.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Mr. Doty? We have a second. Mr. Horner? Any discussion on the consent calendar? Very good. Let's vote to motion.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harville.
I'd like to address the commission, the floor at this time.
You have the floor.
I want to lay out some general information for this coming discussion and some of the discussions that we've heard tonight already. Commissioner Walker, Mr. Green, Ms. Howe, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Long, Ms. Ahern, myself, all came in together. We've seen all this develop. We were able to swap monies around, use fund balance, and we've avoided raising taxes. But we are not at that point anymore. Around two and a half years ago, I listened to Comptroller Munpower speak about reappraisals in the economy. I knew then we were headed for a huge adjustment in appraisals and in taxes. Couple of things to remember about the reappraisal process. When the appraisal goes up, certified tax rate goes down, in this case, way down. However, it's also important to remember that you only pay taxes on 25% of that appraisal rate, of that assessed value for your property. It's different business industry, and that's not the discussion we're having now. I've been asked, what about growth, the housing boom? Yes, true. But for all that growth, we have services we have to provide. More trash cans, more brush pickup, just more trash in general for the landfill. This puts a strain on personnel, equipment, strain on our infrastructure, our roads, et cetera. The citizens have complained, and rightfully so, about our roads. This commission has taken a big swing at providing funding for more paving by adjusting where wheel tax monies go. All $50 of that wheel tax will now go to paving and maintenance. Okay? Now, that's about lower than $3 million. That's 10 miles of road. We got over 400. Still going to take time, but it's better than nothing, which has been done for years. We're a big business. We provide services for the community. Roughly 85% of our budget is people, our employees. We have to keep up with salaries, wages, benefits, or we lose those people. The tax monies are invested in our people, in our schools, in our roads, in our community. The commissioners, you can't sit up here and vote for all these appropriations and then refuse to fund them. We can't cut our way out of this without cutting a bunch of jobs. So who you going to cut? We can't swap monies around anymore. We're down to the bottom on that. Kicking this issue down the road will only mean higher costs, a bigger tax increase next year, just like we've seen with the Justice Center project that had been done 15 years ago. We'd have probably the same building over there with about half the cost. Road maintenance, so on. So here we are. Our rate right now is $1.97. New certified tax rate, if I've got it calculated about right, it's around $1.22. We're looking at maybe 24, 25 cents being added. That gives us a total of about $1.47. That's 50 cents lower than what the tax rate is now. Yes, taxes are going to increase, and I feel for folks. There's a way. You can come to Scotty Long if you have trouble. If you're an elderly person, you can come up there and they can work with you. But even after this raise, we're going to provide the most and the best services of any county around here with the lowest rate in the region. I just wanted to point all that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harville. Well said. And while we're on that, let me add something that the sheriff Hollins had shared a couple of weeks ago. And this is disheartening. And this is right here in our neighborhood. We have people that work for our sheriff's department that are making almost half of a comparable job with Moorestown City Police Department. Now let that sink in for a minute. These are the folks that strap a gun on their hip every day, 24/7, and go out there and say that nothing's going to happen to you tonight. And when they get a chance to move, they only have to move their house, change their kid's school. They can just put on a different color uniform and drive a white car, and they'll double their salary, almost double their salary. We pay less in this county for our sheriff's department than any county in this area. It is absolute disgrace. I've said it before, and I'll keep saying it. And all you have to do is sit down with a pencil and me a calculator, and you look at what you're going to pay in taxes, and you compare them to what you're paying now, and you divide that by 12, and that's what you'll pay every month. And I'm going to tell you right now, that may mean that you have to drink a glass of tap water for dinner instead of a Coke a couple of times a month. And I hear people say, I want roads paved, I want fire protection. We give a lot of money to our voluntary fire department to keep them going. Garbage trucks are running $300,000, $400,000 per. You want your roads paved? It's $300,000, $400,000 a mile to get a road paved. This is stuff that I've found out since I've been on commission, and it's very eye-opening. And it's like Commissioner Harville said, you want these services, it's your county, you've got to pay for it. I get people say, I'm on a fixed income. I'm a retired teacher. I draw social security and my retirement check. That's a fixed in, it needs to be fixed, actually. But I worked hard my whole life, too. And I never had to go to jail, and hope I never do. But there are people out there that will. And I'm glad that we got a certified jail, but the bad boys in. So it's time, it's at this point. We talk about we doubled the wheel tax, what was that, two months ago? Okay? It's going to take a year before that money starts really getting into the road department, where they can start using it. And if you're like me, you want to crash course in how to factor your taxes? Google it. It's on there. It'll walk you step by step, and you can see exactly what your taxes are when we set the rate. And you can see compared to last year and what the new will be, and you'll see that it's not a huge increase. No one's going to go hungry, no one's going to lose the roof over their head, no one's going to lose their life sustaining meds. Doesn't work that way. It's not that big of an increase. Like I say, you may have to drink a glass of water instead of a soda pop, but if you want these things, the sacrifices that may have to be made. Thank you again, Commissioner Harville.
Chairman Hahn, may I ask you a question about what you said, sir?
Let's wait until we get to that, okay? We're now going to recess as the Hamblen...
Ms. Davis, there's a speaker.
Okay. Can we hold off on it till we get down to this? Let's get this recess out of the way, and then we'll work on it. We're going to recess as a Hamblen County legislative body and open the public hearing. 7A is a public hearing, intent to exceed the certified tax rate. And this is where I allow public comments. You want to come to the podium? Again, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Brian Frankfort. 733 Wooddale Road, Moorestown, Tennessee, District 12. So you're talking about suffering in addition for services. You're talking about cutting out some product usage to save for these services. So when you cut out the product, you're cutting out someone else's money, too, right? So like, when I go to the store and I buy the soda, that you're saying I should give up for this tax. The guy at the soda store no longer gets the money. We no longer get the sales tax for that, and we're back to square eight. We've netted nothing. So I just, I don't see how we could profit or get services off people's suffering and taking away when we should really be focusing on like bare minimum stuff. Like, for example, my mother pays $900 a month in healthcare. Why isn't healthcare the same price for each individual regardless of their sex, orientation, gender, pre-existing condition, any of that? Why isn't housing the same? Why are we not up here making people's lives better instead of bickering over this small percent increase for a tax, for, we don't live in Gotham City, we're not arresting, like, how bad is the crime in Hamblen County that we need to build a jail that big? Right? It's, we, this is reality, people. We need to focus on problems we can fix and problems that people have. And people have been up here telling you their problems, and you've been, excuse my French, fricking ignoring it. Well, how can you do that? I'm from here. This is where I'm born. This is from my, this is my home. And I am ashamed of the direction it's going in. And that's why I'm getting involved, that's why I'm going to continue getting involved. But I guess my question really is, like, how can you look at us with a bold-faced lie and say, yeah, sir, you're going to have to drink some tap water tonight instead of your regular juice, because we're going to screw the other guy down at the department store out of his juice money and the tax money we're going to get from that, and then the people who make the juice, and then the people who distribute the juice, from seed to, from seed to cup is the whole process. And you're trying to say, you're trying to say that we can somehow screw one guy out and give us the money, and then there's no net loss. So with that, I'm sorry. Here you go.
Well, I guess I thank you for your comments, although they're completely wrong. We're not...
Oh, wow. What? Wow.
They're way off base. They're way off base, and let me tell you why, okay? Number one, we're not screwing anybody out of anything. All right? I'm just saying...
Nice to run him.
I'm just saying, myself, I drive a van that's 20 years old. I'd like to drive a 2025 one. You know what? If I did that, we would probably go hungry by then. So the point is that everybody has to make sacrifices and live the way they can live. My Coke euphemism maybe wasn't the right one, but my point is, sometimes you can't always have what you want because you have to pay for housing, meds, and roads and other things. So that's my point, you know? That's the point. I'm just saying sometimes sacrifice is involved. So your analogy there, I don't think quite hit you. Okay? Anyone else want to address?
Chris Black, once again. I'm going to read from the April 7th, 2022 Citizen Tribune. Hamblen County is a conservative community that expects its government to manage tax dollars efficiently and effectively. Hamblen County, one of the reasons that our community is so appealing is the low property taxes and low tax base that we offer for the services that we provide. Those aren't my words. Those are Bill Britton's. Back in 2022, I think the recording is actually on the county website, I pulled it up the other day. I had a retort with Commissioner Hahn at that time about the possibility of increasing the wheel tax. If you can recall that, Bobby, I don't know if you can recall it. It's been a while, I'll give you that. But at the time, Commissioner Hahn said that he believed, and I know things change, they do, that there wouldn't be the necessity of increasing the wheel tax or a property tax increase at any point that he could see. And I can understand, things do change. But, again, guys, at what point are we willing to say to the citizens of this county that the can has been kicked down the road for years and years and years and years, and now due to the bad decisions that were made, maybe a lack of oversight by previous members of the commission who are no longer here, certainly by the previous mayor, that you guys have been put in a position to where you just don't have the option but to do anything but continue to increase these taxes? And at that point, when you make that admission, are you willing to admit? And this isn't a political matter as much as it is just, I think, a human decency matter. I would do it if I were on the other side of things. At what point are you willing to admit that when I came to you in 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022 especially, and predicted these things, and some of you put flyers in mailboxes in your districts saying that I was lying about it and engaging in scare tactics, I still have a copy of the flyer, I know who did it, that you're willing to say you were wrong? If you guys will put that out there, and I know you don't care if I get back on a ballot again, you think you'll beat me, and maybe you're right, and hopefully you're wrong. But at what point are you willing to just admit that you were wrong? You have no other option, and so this is where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Linda Noe, Joe Stevens Road. I just passed out about an eight-page packet of some very pertinent information regarding the budget. You talked about we could calculate our tax, not when you haven't been told and you pull things up and they have a blank there. Yeah. But I'm going to talk to you about a way to reduce by 11 cents whatever this proposed tax hike is. tax hike is. The first page shows you how much this year more than the state requires the county is paying. We're paying 27,356, this is to the schools, schools budget. They require 22,897, we're paying 4.4 million more. The second page shows historical data. For the past five years, we've been paying anywhere from 3.8 to 5.1 million more than the minimum state required, and that's good that we can do that. But maybe, like people have been saying, maybe we've reached the end of it. The third page shows local revenue. That's, this is the contribution that the county makes to the schools under maintenance of effort. Notice the first three, 22 fiscal year 23, fiscal year 24, we have way exceeded maintenance of effort, which way exceeded what we were required to do. And particularly, look at the bottom line between fiscal year 22 and 23, the school budget went up $15 million, and it has continued with that huge increase that occurred in that year when they switched to the TISA formula. The fourth page shows maintenance of effort again and how it's divided up. The school, if, if this county and the city budgets are correct on sales tax, and they're the last three pages, the city's going to get 21 million in sales tax, that means the schools get 21 million. The county's getting over 2 million in sales tax, that means the schools are getting over 2 million in sales tax. That's $23 million, but what are the schools budgeting? 18.9. Why are they doing that? Because they are lowballing it on purpose. If you will move $3 million from property tax on the school budget and increase the sales tax to, by 3 million, you've-
Thank you for your comments.
You've got money to reduce the sales.
Anyone else wish to address?
Good.
Yes, James Cox, 610 Center Street, again. I don't drink soda pop, I drink iced tea I make myself, I watch my own budget at home. I believe in good stewardship of money. I've been a financial secretary for a fraternal organization for decades. There's no excuses for people to not know where their money goes, for any public servant, and I would like to repeat that, please, public servant. Do we all understand that? I take an oath when I serve with other people's money, I believe you all do, too. I don't believe in nepotism, never have, it was held to a higher standard. So thank you for your, your anachronisms on soda pop, but I don't like trying to be taught voodoo economics either. I like to see real numbers, real facts, and real figures, especially when it comes out of my pocket as a citizen. So as public servants, that's your bare minimum responsibility to me as a citizen and a taxpayer in Moorestown. So I not only pay county taxes, I also pay city taxes. And then if the boys want to leave the sheriff's department, we'll take them in the city because I like good policemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move down to item 7B, the 2025, 2026 fiscal year budget. Again, I left these public comments, I think we already hit that pretty hard.
We got hard enough. As I said, the last three pages in that packet show that the school board will get $23 million unless the city and county don't have a clue what they're doing. I'll assume that's wrong. But that means the schools get 23 million, and you might wonder, well, why aren't they putting something closer to 23 million on their actual maintenance of effort budget? Do any of you know why they lowball sales tax? That's interesting, particularly since at least half of you have worked for the school board or currently work for the school board, or bus drivers, whatever it is. They lowball it, bu- bu- they lowball it because they are guaranteed 50% of sales tax, whether it's in the budget or not. So if you lowball sales tax, you've kind of got a little hidden pack of money that the state's going to send you. They'll send you the rest of that sales tax, the rest of that 4 million, the difference between 19 million and 23. And you, you don't even, nobody knows that it doesn't come through you all, you don't appropriate it to them, it just comes from the state per state law. So if you lowball it, you make people do a higher property tax. Now you've got the higher property tax, the low sales tax, and then, woo, here comes this other 4 million. If this has been done, this has been done for years and years and years, and now that we are facing this crunch, it's time to correct it, to have truth in budgeting. Don't have this hidden money over here that you don't let those people know about. You, you wouldn't even see that until the audit at the end of the year. That's why you see those figures that are higher than 27,356, 27 million 356, because by the year end, all that extra money has come in. And now they've got 30 million 903, or 31,641. So please think about the people and the taxpayers. They have higher costs, and everything else that you keep talking about that you face, they face, too. And if there's a way to reduce this proposed ta- hike, whatever it is, by 11 cents, by 30, or by 3 million dollars, it's incumbent upon you to look at that and to vote to save that tax from the taxpayers.
Thank you for your comments. So we're going to close the public hearing, reconvene as a Hamlin County legislative body, and I'll call on Budget Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will move to 8A, vote to acknowledge the new certified tax rate calculated by the State Board of Equalization. That combination is 1.0993 and 0.1168. That is for a total of 1.2161 for the calculated rate, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion?
Would he give us those totals again, please, sir?
Restate those totals, Mr. Long.
You should have it at your desk in the handout.
That's all right, if you don't be bothered. Thank you.
Any other comments? See, now, let's vote to motion.
Eleven, yay, one, no.
Motion passes.
Go to 8B, Resolution 2510. This is a resolution to levy a rate in excess of the certified tax rate for the county of Hamlin County, Tennessee. Do I have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion. And we have a second. Mr. Horner, any discussion? Ms. Green?
I'd like to make a motion to table this for 30 days till we get the rest of the figures so that we've got all information available to us before we do this.
We have a motion to table.
Chairman, if I, if I may interject.
Please.
At this point, this, this body needs to fill in the numbers that she's talking about. At this point, you know, the discussion's been made about, uh, raising a levy above the certified tax rate. This body needs to take that up at this point. Make a motion if that is where you're at, and, and let that discussion lie right here. The reason that 2511 or 2510 is blank is for this discussion right here. We filled in the numbers that were known already. What is not known is, uh, if there's a rate increase, what goes to the general fund and what will go to sanitation fund. Uh, everything actually, it goes into a pile, and, and this body chooses to where that goes. But this, this body needs to take up at this point discussion, if you're going to raise that rate or not.
Thank you, Mayor. We have any other discussion? Ms. Howell?
Okay, yeah, oh, yeah, yep, yep. What if we didn't, what if we didn't pass it right today? What if we did decide that we could move some money from property and make it up with sales? When we look at this, it's, everybody in here is a taxpayer, and all the citizens have more than met the school budget, maintenance of effort, they, more than that for years and years, as Ms. Noe mentioned. But not everybody uses the school system. Everybody uses the roads. Everybody uses sanitation. We pray we don't need the police or the fire or the EMS and the humane, we, we, we hope we don't need them. We have to provide them for everyone. But since we have met time and again, and since some of the, this sales tax is going to just slide right in there for the schools, um, I'd like to see us reduce that. Uh, when, when the gentleman mentioned about the $900 for the, uh, his mother's health care, there was a lady, maybe six or eight months ago, and after our meeting, she said, "Ms. Howell, Ms. Howell, come over here." And she showed me her bank statement, talk about trust, and she said, "This is it, this is it." And there was $900 that came in a month. That would wipe her out.
Yes.
I don't, so people are making extremely crucial decisions every day. Do I get the medicine, or do I get the groceries? Do I pay the rent? Do I pay my taxes? Goodness gracious. We, and, and it's, and nobody should feel, we've done, all the citizens of Hamlin County have met the maintenance of effort on our school system. Goodness. And so I would like to see us move some money so that if we have to have this tax increase, and I don't operate well with a negative number either. But I keep, it keeps going back, these, these elderly people are not using our school system. Now, maybe their children or grandchildren still live here and they are, but a lot of people don't. But golly, everybody uses the road and the sanitation, so I just think that we have met this, and we can back off on this, uh, we can use some of that sales tax for things we need. The other part of that is, I would like for our trustee, I would like for us to, uh, have more programs. Uh, if, if you're over 65 and you're making 900 a month, then by golly, that, that should freeze your, your, that lady shouldn't be affected by this increase in taxes. Or maybe she gets to pay monthly. We need to do, come up with something to help our citizens who are struggling, because goodness, um, we don't want these, uh, citizens to become homeless, uh, at, at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. First of all, I've got a direct question with what Ms. Howell brought up to, uh, basically, Amanda. Back in '24, if my memory serves me correctly, Mayor Britton moved, and I'm thinking it was 12 cents, so you may have to correct me, Amanda, my memory is short in my old age, but he moved 12 cents in property tax from the school system and re-put it back as sales tax, and moved the property tax, put it back as sales tax at the bottom. They still got the same amount of money. So my question is, why can we not move that property tax, put it in the general fund, which will take care of some other things, reduce, what I'm hearing is 25 cents, reduce that to 14 cents, to treat our citizens like they should be treated? Not everybody draws retirement like you and I do, Bobby. I'm displaced, I worked at a factory where they had that. But I worked hard in the factory, I was a stock handler for a long time, and I, believe me, I did earn my money. But, uh, we could, if we do that, we take care of the general fund, we can pull that doggone 25 cents that I'm hearing rumors of down to at least 13 cents, we still have a win-win situation, just like we did when Mayor Britton did it. And he did it as a win-win situation, and as far as I know, it worked. And that, with the 14 cents, should take care of the 5.5 million dollar deficit, if I didn't misunderstand, Mayor Kachal, that we have at present.
Do you have anything? Six cents?
How much was it in '24, Ms. Amanda?
In six cents.
All right, how much was it before that? All right, so '25 was what year?
'23, '24.
Okay, I apologize, I was thinking it was '24, but thank you. So in '23, '24, we ma- Mayor Britton moved 12 cents from that property tax to the schools, and it was a win-win deal. And he was a pretty smart man. I know me and him didn't gee-haw real well, but if it would work for him, why wouldn't it not work again?
Mr. Mayor, can you address?
This would be my point in that, no, nobody's wrong. Nobody's wrong. That money is there. What we don't see is what's on the horizon. That, that is the difficult question. This body is facing, to balance this budget, a rate increase. Do you want to do it this year and take a chance of not doing it next year or the year after? That's the question. I, I, I got you, we can move a little bit, you can do that, you can. What I don't know is what the economy will do if, if, uh, I, I don't mean scared-tat it, but if a war breaks out, what, what's it going to happen? What's going to happen to sales tax? Where is it going to go? And then if we move this, and then we have to replace it to meet a maintenance of effort, you've got a voucher program that's being voted on. We don't know what the effect it'll have on this body at some point, what money they're going to come back to us and need. Then you have also mandated from the state of Tennessee, teacher salaries from the bottom up. There's a lot of things that's unknown here that we don't know. So yes, you can move this money, you could, but then we may turn around and say, "Well, we're going to have to do this again, folks." That's what I, I would hate to see this body be faced with, is two substantial increases back to back, or even within three years. I don't, we, nobody here, I promise you, wants to do this. It's where we're at. The comments have been made, you know, we didn't, I don't think anybody would argue that capital or operational costs, we knew were going to increase. And I don't know, uh, some of the comments made about newspaper article, I don't know exactly what context that was in as far as when he made those comments. I know one thing, we had to add employees. It didn't matter what size, what type, where the jail went, we had to add employees. We had to build a jail, that's acknowledged. That is truly acknowledged, we had to build a jail, whether it was this one- Whether it was this one or some other type, we had to do so. Adding employees was a do-so. Those are recurring operational costs that we cannot hide from regardless of one level, three level, 10 level, we had to do that. That, and coupled with insurance increases. Tipping fees was brought up. We, Amanda had already prepared for the idea that tipping fees would go up, but they are. New residents in town, our tipping fees goes up, that cost goes up. Those are operational costs that we can't maintain where we're at. We have to look at new revenue. There's a lot to be said here. Everybody's not wrong here. The school system's got more than they need. I can see that changing in the near future. That would be what I would say. I would be cautious about doing so. This body has that choice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've pondered over this many, 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 many hours, weeks, months, wondering what the best plan of action is. One thing I know is pointing fingers is not the right plan of action. It's been thrown out since minute one with the wheel tax increase. My roads haven't been fixed. When we increased it, it brought in $1.3 million a year. We have over 400 miles of roads in Hamlin County. To repave all of them in one year's time would take 120 million plus. We can't do that because we brought in revenue for six months. No, a lot of the roads haven't been fixed. 1% we can get a year. That's why it was addressed and has been increased to 3 million by moving the other $27, which at that point will still take 40 years to pave them. Things cost money. They do. Everybody is hit by it. Every business, I work at Molly, been there 39 years, supervisor in maintenance. I see what we go through there just trying to retain employees and Molly pays a good wage. It's inside, it's air-conditioned, they have good benefits, and they still can't retain because of the actual pay. They have issues. We have to adjust pay. We have to retain our employees. Mr. Scott made a statement there and I don't blame him a bit. He mentioned that if our, our good guys at the Sheriff's Department want to come to the city, they'd be glad to have good officers. We don't need to be paying to send all of our officers through the academy and then not paying them enough and then go somewhere else. That's 100% loss for us. We're not gaining anything by doing that. But we can't make them sign off on things because we can't even get them without doing that. We can't get enough employees. We can't make them sign guarantees they won't go somewhere because basically we're scrambling by to get what we got now. I personally, I'm, I'm torn, very much so, because I, I really think that the schools, although they are getting more, they provide a lot of services for us. They're what educates our future. They're what brings our workforce in. They're what brings our, basically, our new leaders. Yeah, there is some difference in the sales tax. In my opinion, the reason that they rate it the way they do versus the top of the line is because sales tax is not guaranteed. It's dependent upon the consumer and how much they spend. With things going up, yeah, people paying more and they're paying one more sales tax. But a lot of people I talk to, I know us in particular, we're buying this. We're trying to find cheaper items.
Drinking what?
Well, drinking what we, drinking what we have to, to make ends meet and to get my, again, like I said, I don't want to dwell upon it. I never have wanted to. I'd like to balance it. But it's just come to the point where at the end of the road that we have to do something. I am with some of the others, though, that I think that it would be beneficial if, I don't want to hold off on the whole thing, but I think it'd be beneficial if we could split it and do it half this year, see where the numbers come in. See where the numbers come in on the new construction and the new revenue coming in and then go from there. That comes to me from the numerous, numerous people I've asked about it and what their opinion is. So with that being said, I don't even know if this is the right time to do the 100% or if it's the next one down. Next one down, I would say. But first, we've got, we've got to have revenue. Everybody knows it. Everybody knows cost has went up. Well, it goes up, it goes up for us as well. And by us, I mean for the county as a whole. Everything we pay is going up. As the mayor said, our insurance, not only have we been paying out board claims and everything else, ain't going to have to pay in more in our premiums, but insurance companies are going up just because of the fact property values went up. We have to have replacement cost. You know, it's going to go up. There are people that manage and work the insurance companies want a tax or a pay increase. So they have to pass that along, which comes to our fuel for the Sheriff's Department, our vehicles, our fuel for the road department, sanitation. Anything that's out there that's paid for by the public, the county has to pay as well for our infrastructure and it is going up and we have to cover it. But please just keep that in mind. We're not doing this just to bring in a lot of revenue. We're doing this because there's dollars that have to be met. Another thing that I found out about when I got on the commission, I've never been a fan of living off of debt as our federal government and a lot of state governments do. I don't believe in it. I know that Tennessee, I'm proud that we don't live off of debt in Tennessee and our federal government does, but a lot of other states do. But as a county mandated by law that we don't live off. We have to budget for what we spend. We have to bring in the revenue. We can, for one year, set back and look, but we don't need to wipe out our entire fund balance if we do that. It needs to be a limited amount, something that's, might be attainable. But I've been on my soapbox enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. Commissioner Neesmith?
We're going over the Resolution 2410, Resolution to the level of tax rate. As the mayor just said, we can go ahead and do that tax, convert the school over and save, what was it, how many cents?
You can save, you save 12 cents if you do what Mayor Britton did.
Can save 12 cents. And that'll make, that way we won't worry about what's going on next year or year I to next, let's take care of this year and not, and do what we got to do this year. We're not, we're not, God's not saying we're going to have tomorrow. We don't know about that. Let's take the month, let's take the savings while we can and get it, and get it in our now. I believe, Amanda, how much would that be if we do that tax into, into property tax? What'd you say, 12 cents or 14 cents?
12 cents.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Can I state it for you? If you move 12 cents from the property tax for the schools and substitute sales tax, how much revenue would that give us to go against that five and a half million dollar deficit that the mayor addressed us about?
Just over 3 million.
I can't hear.
A little over 3 million. That's, that's what I'm saying. We can not have an increase of 3 million dollars. Take it while it's there. It needs to be more next year. Take it while, I'm sure it probably will be. We'll find a way to get up there with it, but I think you need to take it, take it while it's there. And the mayor said we could do it, said it a couple times, we can do it. Let's take care of this taxing, this tax bill this year and let next year worry about itself.
Mr. Bobby, can I ask Ms. Amanda a question, please?
Well, you, you have-
I'm finished.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Amanda, if we do the 12 cents, and you said 3 million, right?
I meant 11.
I'm sorry. I meant 12 cents is what I was asking about. That I, if I misstated it, I'll apologize to you, darling.
I think if you took 12, they wouldn't make their maintenance of effort.
I think they wouldn't sales tax by what they've got for the, ever since '21. And 20, up to '21, they have exceeded every year and not counting the 13 million that they got, and I'm thinking it was two years ago in the state of Tennessee on top of that. So we've not calculated by long shot what all they've got, not counting the grants and everything else.
That, those things don't matter.
Well, I know that doesn't matter.
Okay, but we have, we have a maintenance of effort that we have to meet.
I know that.
Okay.
That we've met it every, we've exceeded it.
I understand that.
By 4 million dollars every year since '21, if I read my paperwork correctly.
You did.
But my question is, if we took 12 cents from the property tax and that the school gets, name, and you said that would give us how much?
3.3 million.
Okay, 3.3 million. And I think Mayor Cutshaw said five and a half million dollar deficit. What absolutely would we have to make as far as a property tax increase to take care of the rest of it?
2 million is in there. Outstanding.
I thought she said 3.3. She did, I misunderstood.
3.3 away from 5.5, it gives you 2.2.
I'd like to add again that I don't recommend it. You're going to turn around next year and have to do it again. That's what, I'm afraid this body will be faced with, tax increases two years in a row. I don't know that the people want to hear that. They don't want to hear it one year. That's, that's my only really point here, is that if you do it two years in a row, you're going to back us into a fence that, that if you go this extreme, that we may end up having to find more for them next year. I tell you, we, there's some unknowns that we have to be careful about. So I caution you.
With all respect, Mayor Cutshaw, we done backed against the fence and we've-
Ma'am, I understand that, yes.
Pushing out the other side.
I do agree with you. And what you're saying is not wrong. I'm telling you, as Mr. Neesmith said, I said you can do that. I don't recommend it. That's what I'm telling you.
I understand that. But what would that leave that we would have to have to get us past the, what he called the five and a half million hole? 9 cents. Okay. Now, wait a minute, you said in the city, but would that be the same for the county? Because I get confused on some of that, darling. So it would be 8 to 9 cents in the county, which would be the part, okay, correct me, please.
So that's city rate. So then you've got a sanitation for the county.
And that's how much?
Well, the state said it at 11, for 11.68 cents.
And that's taking out that 12 cents in property tax. But the figures you've given me is if we pull the 12 cents in property tax from the school, correct? Make sure that I'm clear?
Value of the penny, we estimate will be 275,000.
Okay.
So if you pulled, how much?
12 cents from the property tax for the school.
3.3 million.
And you still think it would take how much more to take care of the deficit we have now?
Our deficit was five and a half.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would leave you 2.2.
Okay.
And the value of the penny is 275,000 less 8 cents.
Okay, so the total, taken into terms, the sanitation and everything else, would be
Is that sanitation figured in this, Amanda?
No.
The sanitation not figured in this 5.5 million?
No, that's just general fund.
That's just general fund?
So we don't have the tipping fees, which is another thing to put this off till we can get more information and make it like we need to. I don't know about the rest of you, but I have enough sense to know when the county gets that 25 cents, they're not going to drop it. They're going to stick it to the constituents in District 14 that have to make the difference between medicine and groceries. And there's a lot of them. So we need to think about this. We can put it off, they did back in 2002, if I read my resolution correctly, that I got a hold of today. So why can we not do that? I understand that the mayor doesn't recommend it, but that's our wits he's talking about. And for my part, I'd rather take it one year at a time. It's not been that long ago, and I think Commissioner Doughty, well, they may have made that they came up that they had to have a wheel tax. And if I remember correctly, the headline was "Pick Your Poison." And they hollered, "Wheel tax or property tax?" They put the wheel tax in and come right back and slapped the property tax in too. So if you do that two years in a row, it's done been down to the citizens of Hamlin County. It's not going to be a new stick.
Ms. Howell?
Well, we don't want to be in the red. If we look at the 24, is that what we're looking at?
No, we haven't got to set them out, just that we-
Commissioner, Chairman Hahn, ask them to speak into the mics, I can't hear.
He was addressing them.
Okay, well, it needs, for the video, for the public, it needs to be there.
Yes, sir. Well, what I was thinking is, that would mean next year, we'd have to say it would be incumbent, the citizens will, you know, provide the 22 million. And what if we did trade out where the guy who comes in at 3 o'clock leaves his vehicle there and the guy who starts his duty at 3:05 uses that vehicle? In other words, where is our austerity? You know, because I don't, I don't like any of the taxes because I have to pay them just like our citizens. But we, you know, we have been extremely generous and yes, we don't know. And as my husband is very fond of saying, we make a decision on the information we have at hand. And then tomorrow, we may break our leg and we were going to be in a race. We don't know that. But we make our decision on the information we have at hand and then we live with it. And this is, this is not fun and, but I don't want to be in the red, but I feel like it is a burden to taxpayers. So I understand you don't- I understand you don't want to come back, and neither do I, and bring this up, but... Maybe we don't need to go the full 25. Is that what keeps us in the red, I mean, the black?
Yes, ma'am. That would balance. And within that, if that's where this body went, for example, if you went that, 21 cents would most likely go to general fund, and we put 4 cents into the sanitation, and everything would, it would certainly help us not to have to do anything else next year. And when I say that, again, recurring costs. See, next year, our folks are gonna want their cost of living raises. There again, if revenues are flat, I'd hate to see us have to look at two years in a row.
Mr. Harville?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to amend your motion with a rate amount?
I thought the rate came in the next.
We haven't gotten the rate yet.
Haven't got the rate. I'll amend my motion with 25 cent rate, yes.
How much?
25 cents.
Mr. Horner, you second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
We do have a motion. We do have a second. Mr. Doughty?
Since we're setting the rate, I'd like to make a motion that we do split that. And instead of coming all at one time, we increase by 12, 12 and a half cents this year. And then reassess before we come back the following year. I'll put that in form of motion.
Does that amend the motion?
We have a motion on the floor now.
Got two motions on the floor.
My motion to amend.
To amend, yeah.
We have to keep in mind what it takes to get us out of the red and into the black this year. And I know Mr. Neesmith said, you know, good Lord may come calling before next year, and if he does, we don't have to worry about any of it anyway, so. But we have an amendment to split the 25 cents in half, 12 and a half, 12 and a half.
With 12 and a half this year and reassess next year.
12 and a half this year and reassess. Any discussion?
I'd like to-
You don't have a second?
You don't have a second? Ms. Green?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this for 30 days. We did it in 2002, the resolution to use the previous totals. And I don't care a bit to pass it out to you, since I've got a copy of it. It's not something new. It's done been done, and it was proven. But if we do that, we will use what was budgeted before, the rates and everything, and it'll take care of it. So may I read it to you, please?
Well, you made that motion earlier, and it didn't get a second, so it died-
Well, I'm trying again. I'm trying again, darling.
It's dead.
We have a motion, two motions.
We have two motions on the table now. We have Mr. Doughty's motion to go 12 and a half, reassess next year. Do you have that motion?
Motion dies.
Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a second? Motion dies.
So there is no second, so the motion dies. Now, that brings us back to our original motion by Mr. Harville, setting the rate at 25 cents. So let's, uh... Ms. Green?
I think I made a motion to amend, and under Robert's rules of order, it is allowed, darling. And I apologize for calling you darling. I'm used to talking to grandchildren, not older gentlemen. But anyway, my motion is to amend, so, so at least give me the opportunity to see if I get a second before you cut me off and this and that.
No, I didn't cut you off. Your original motion was to table.
Yes, sir.
This motion is to amend.
No, this motion is, I apologize, is to table. I apologize to you. Yes, sir.
That motion's already died due to lack of a second.
At least give it the opportunity to see if it gets a second this time, please.
Well, no, it's already-
It was in the other context. It was not in this one.
Ms. Green, you made a motion to table. You did not get a second. Motion dies. We're now gonna vote on the motion by Mr. Harville at 25 cents. Commissioners, I ask you to vote the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I need to add one thing on this, on Mr. Harville's motion. That 25 cents would be total, but in that motion, there's an inside rate now and a county rate. So just to differentiate, for example, if the 25 were to pass, Finance Department, Mayor's Office Finance Department would recommend that you put 21 cents toward general fund, four more cents toward sanitation. What that means is the inside rate for the city of Marston would be 1.09 decimal, whatever those decimals are, plus that 21. That would be the inside rate. The outside rate would be the plus 16 more cents. So I just differentiate that. Does that make any sense? That's how that 25 would be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Green?
I know our mayor is our politician, but you don't care. Ask him if I could not table that. If I did not have the right to amend it, to table it, please.
You made a motion to table it.
Yes, sir. I did.
And it did not get a second.
It did not at that time, no, sir.
Okay.
And that was in previous business before we got to this one, I think.
We're on the same motion. We're gonna have to vote this motion, and we're gonna vote this motion.
I think you're wrong, Mr. Bobby.
Excuse me?
I think you're wrong.
Mr. Chairman, it would behoove the body just to allow a vote, a motion to table, and see where that went.
As you wish.
Yeah, well, no, not my wish. If it got a second.
I understand.
If it got a second, I'm just saying, she motioned that. There was two amendments on, or it was amendment and a motion on the floor, and she jumped in and asked for a table. If she gets a second, take a vote.
Sure.
Do I need to re-? Okay. I make a motion to amend, to table this for 30 days, till we get more information so that we can make an adequate decision for these citizens of Hamlin-
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
What information do you not have?
There's a lot we didn't have, but one thing, I don't have the tipping fees that I requested this morning.
Tipping fees, we know the tipping fees, and it's already been calculated in this year's budget.
It wasn't made available everybody to it. I know-
Yes, ma'am, you've got that in your budget documents. Right now, we increased that line item by $300,000 in this year's budget, and we discussed it in this room.
Point of order. Question. I still have the right to table.
You do, but your information was, you don't have the information.
I still think I needed more information than I have, but I need a second.
Well, what more information do you need, Ms. Green?
Well, I should've had a lot more. I went through my-
I mean, you're saying a lot more, but what do you need? I mean, I don't understand.
I would've liked to have had more regarding sanitation, for one thing. I'd like to have more regarding-
Be specific.
Well, I am.
Okay.
Sanitation, for one thing, tipping, for another, what the council tabulated on the others, just for an example, if you please. But I'm hoping I get a second.
Ms. Green has a motion to table. We have a motion?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
She just reached over and told Mr. Neesmith to second it. My goodness.
I did, because I didn't think he heard it, sir. Certainly didn't.
Don't sit there and tell that.
I don't have to tell that. It's the fact.
Motion does not gain a second. It dies. Mr. Neesmith?
I'll second the motion, but-
It's too late.
Too late. I don't know how to use a button. I've never seconded one in four years. I've tried, but everybody over there has to get in on it and second it every time they do something. But anyway, we have not heard, we don't, we have not voted on solid waste. It wasn't voted on till last Friday night, and it's not been voted on by the commission. It's gotta be voted on by the commission before it can be voted on to put it to budget. We've not voted on it yet. Prove me wrong.
Is that it?
That's all I've got on.
Okay.
No other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, could we just call the vote on that just to end, because they did unfortunately get one, although it was late. But if we call for a vote, it will not go, you know?
Come out on the same page?
No, on her amendment.
But it died because of the second. I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, you don't know how to run the buttons. I can't. Okay, once again, back to Mr. Harville's motion. Gonna move forward?
Yes.
Let's amend that motion, Mr. Harville's motion, once again, for the substantiate between inside rate and outside rate. Inside rate would be 131 at that, and the outside rate would be 147.
Everyone clear?
If you went with the 25 cent.
If we, if this passes, yes. All right, let's vote the motion.
9 ye, 3 nae.
Motion passes. Mr. Long?
Go to 8C, Resolution 2511, Resolution Fixing Tax Levy in Hamlin County, beginning July 1 of 2025. Do I have a motion? I put that in form of motion.
Do we have a motion?
Before the motion is made, let me give you the figures now, since that levy passed, what that will be. What that will be. This body passed the 25 cent increase. It will now include in the general fund, if you look at the inside rate for the general fund, .7694. Inside rate. Do you see that on Resolution 2511?
Couldn't understand it. What's that number?
.7694.
Inside.
That's for the inside rate.
Outside?
Outside would be, add .16 to that. Okay, yeah, inside rate, the bottom number would be $1.31. One, I'm yelling, 1.31.
1.39, 31. Can't understand it.
You move to the next column. So what we'll do now, we'll move that same .7694 straight over in the general on the outside rate. Move down to the next blank for solid waste sanitation. You add .16. That is a total of 1.47. That's where the .25 rate increase will go.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Long. We have a second. Mr. Richardson? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that's 50 cents below, what, 197, right?
Yes. 40 cents.
40 cents, okay.
50 cents, right.
50 cents, yeah.
All right, let's vote the motion.
9 ye, 3 nae.
Motion passes.
Move to 8D, Resolution 2512, Making Appropriations for the Various Fund Departments, Institutions, Offices, and Agencies for the Hamlin County, Tennessee, for the Year Beginning July 1, 2025, and Ending in June 30, 2026. I put that in form of motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? C9, vote the motion.
10 ye, 2 nae.
Motion passes.
Go to 8E, Resolution 2513, Making Appropriations to Nonprofit, Charitable, and Civic Organizations of Hamlin County, Tennessee, for the Year Beginning July 1, 2025, and Ending June 20, 2026.
Form of motion.
Form of motion, Stephen.
We have a motion? We have a second. Mr. Neesmith?
Do we know how many millions of dollars that nonprofit's gonna cost us this next year and charitable groups? Do we have a total figure, Amanda?
While she's looking for that, when you break down the nonprofits that we're providing, take essential services such as the fire departments and things that we are committed to, the library board, animal shelter, those type of nonprofits, if you take those out, we spend less than $300,000 a year. And that's to help the community, those things.
It's on the bottom there, Wayne. But like Chris was saying, the mayor was saying that that includes your volunteer fire departments and the library and 911, things that aren't really optional, I would say, you know? So I don't know which nonprofits exactly you're enquiring about, but-
Animal Control.
So Animal Control, our yearly contribution's $300,000.
Did we give them that other 200,000, 100,000 for them raising money, and we gonna match it?
You're talking about the shelter, the animal shelter. It's in this budget. We haven't given it to them yet, because they've not done their-
When this budget comes out, will it be 500,000 or a total of 300,000?
No, it's, there's three up here for them and two down here when they get their match.
That's five.
Right.
So they're gonna be getting $500,000.
Now, that 300, the city reverses us for half of that.
What about the other 200,000?
They've already given their part.
They've given their-
They've given 100,000, and I think-
So all we got to do is put another 100 with it then.
That part.
We gonna give two, and them give one?
No, I think they're gonna give another one when they meet their qualification.
Mr. Neesmith, if I may interject, this was voted on several years ago. The city gave the animal shelter $100,000, and this was for capital improvements. The county as well committed $100,000. But they also, the county, committed by vote of the commission, another $100,000 if they matched $100,000. We have currently, in escrow, if you will, $200,000 waiting on them to match the $100,000. The city already gave their portion. We've been holding ours until they matched.
Okay. Question to you, Mayor.
That is a one-time expense. That is, the 300,000 is yearly. That is split with us and the county, or the city, I mean.
Question to you. What if another nonprofit wanted that same request? Would you give them that same request?
Give them $100,000 if they raised $100,000? It'd be up to us. Huh? It'd be up to us.
Yeah, it's not my decision, I could bring the request to the board, this, uh, this commission, but no, sir, that would not be my, my decision. This, this commission voted that, accepted that by majority vote whenever that happened, I don't remember the date of that.
Well, I wasn't at last year's budget, you remember, I was in hospital. Come in right after that, but it, it seemed like a lot of money, $500,000 for dogs, for dogs and cats. That seems like a lot of money. And it used to be $100,000 for the city and 100,000 for the county.
Okay.
Dog food ain't gone up that much.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak? I spoke to motion.
Nine ye, three nae.
Motion passes.
Go to eight, F. Resolution 2514, it's a joint resolution to approve a non-reoccurring one-time appropriation for the fiscal year 2026 to fund non-reoccurring technology equipment, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yep.
Al?
Yes, sir, thank you. Remind me of this, is this, um, this technology non-recurring, is something?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this one-time gift resolution this body voted on in budget committee to give to the school system, okay? We, we had meant for it to go toward their salary, um, uh, 1% increase compensation. Well, they can't take a one-time gift and use it for recurring costs, therefore we're filling a technology bucket and they're moving money that they had appropriated there over into their recurring expenses and you, tip for tat, basically.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the 600,000 for the school? Is that what that's for?
Ms. Green?
If you don't care, let him finish his question, cause he lost the button on it. That's what she was over here for.
Oh, yeah.
Please.
The technology going all to pieces.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Am I, am I speaking now? Is that 600,000, uh, Amanda? Is that the one time, is that 600,000 for the school? Okay. If, if we, if we could, I mean, we spend a lot of money here, we could add one little hive to the line and tell what that's about and I wouldn't have to sit over here and ask like that, cause I don't remember every word and everything we said in the last month.
Ms. Green?
I'd like to interrate, I know that you and Stowe did give them 600,000, but we have over exceeded since '21. Hammond County citizens have been more than generous. I will not vote to give them 600,000, I, I think they need to learn to budget. They've exceeded for the last several years and it's about time they learn to do like some of us old folks have done and learn to budget what they've got coming through the door to pay what they are. First point of order, first point is we exceed what new teachers are supposed to have according to the state of Tennessee standards. We're above that, I know you and I talked about this the last time and you didn't see my point, but we are above. We are above in so many ways and it's time that they started learning to budget what they have. They've exceeded several years, sales tax and everything else, but unless you look at the audits at the end of the year, you do not see it and you do not know it.
Mr. Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to bring up one point about this being for technology and such. Our CTE, our career technical education programs is the reason why we have as much of the new industry coming into this community that we do, cause we have an educated workforce, those that can, um, run machinery, that know something about it, they have a general technical background. This is money that is spent, that's gonna be spent forward. Yeah, I know we had the new TCAT with the expansion of it and there's numerous, numerous industries that have come in and said the reason they chose Hammond County was because of our CTE and our TCAT, because they know they can get an educated workforce here. If we do away with it, we don't help provide for it, then the industry's gonna go somewhere where they do provide for it. And yes, we're, our vote was to raise tax, but a lot of the reason why we have a lower percentage or a lower penny amount of tax rate in Hammond County is because of the vast industry that we have here, cause they pay property tax just as well. And if we don't have them, start looking, can't even bar the door. So, I'm proud that we're doing this, again, I hate that we're raising taxes, but I really believe if I'm not wrong, Mayor, if you'll correct me on this, this is coming out of fund balance this time and not out of the budget, cause this is a one-time recurring amount.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you, sir. So this is a budget for the tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdy, appreciate that. Mr. Neesmith?
Was this, uh, is this money going to the school of applied technology where they're learning all this technology at?
It's going to the-
Goes to Hammond County school.
Hammond County school system.
Yes, sir.
Where they're learning all this technology at.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Carden?
Uh, yes, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to just speak to that, uh, since I was the one that brought the motion forward, uh, the last meeting we had on this, um, you know, I think we've said it several times up here and again, this is unfortunate, we're talking about raising, uh, property taxes, but if, if we don't have a school system, I, I did, I was, um, two years ago, I ran for school board and I was not elected, that's okay. And I would have, if, if I could do it today, I would double the budget they have today because if we don't fund our education on any level, if our property taxes are what they are now, they'll be worse. Our industry people will leave, will be taxing industries more than what they're taxed now, people won't live here. Sheriff Mullins has said he's dropped the standard for, I would say standard, the age for hiring people because he can't get certified people, education, I think from eight, from 21 to 18. And I have an 18-year-old and that scares me to death. He's got a nice place to work in, but I wouldn't let him be there myself and, but if he had to be, I would support him, but since I brought that up, capital improvements in the school system, one item that Mr. Bunch brought up, that was the Boilers at East High School. It was almost, it was like 1.8 million dollars, one expense, and if it goes out tomorrow, they don't open schools.
For a long time.
For a long time. That's a big time for our county. I'm from another county originally, been here as long as, I've been here as I was there, my high school was in one of the floods. They're gonna have to rebuild the entire high school. They've been going to a county, an adjacent county school in Carter County to go to school. If that Boiler goes out, these folks here, we don't have a place big enough to ho, to house these kids, there's no way. We have a lot of other problems in school that needs to be found, we have school systems or schools that are being built, we don't have enough schools, that's another problem for another day, but I brought that up and like, uh, Thomas brought up, CTE, it's a big deal, it's a big deal in my job, every single day. I hire people with education and I can't find people with education, they can't find teachers. So I'm proud that I brought that forward and I know that we're gonna be doing the right thing again, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion, we have a second. Let's vote to motion.
Nine ye, three nae.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Long, we'll move down to item nine, the Finance Committee. I want to again call on Chairman Rodney Long.
Go to nine A, Policies and Procedures for Homeowners Rehabilitation Program, Hammond County, 2024, Home East Tennessee Disaster Relief Grant, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Go to nine B, Resolution 2515, resolution before the County Commission of Hammond County, Tennessee approving the program policies procedures for the 2024 Hammond County Disaster Recovery Program, HM dash 24 dash 15, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Go to nine C, Amendment to the Retention Grant for the Post-Certified Officers, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Nine D, we'll go with D1, Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment, number nine, zero dollar, that's reclassifying funds between expense accounts, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
D2, Fund 101, mul, multiple categories for 990,345, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Green.
Is there any matches for those by any chance, sir?
I don't believe there are, Mr. Mayor, there's no matches with that.
Yes, two.
That's just moving funds within the departments for the end of the year, that's not related to grants. That was-
Yes.
That was the fund balance.
Right, yeah, it's just a transfer in that.
Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
D3, Fund 101, multiple categories, recognition, recognition of grant and other revenues of 413,190, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
D4, Fund 122, Drug Control Fund of $14,000, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
D5, Fund 128, Drug Use Abatement Fund of 213,070 and 10 cents, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Green?
Is that the one for the animals, 170 something odd thousand, honey? I'm sorry. Is that the one for, the animals for MS? It said drug abatement, that's the reason I asked. It's not the opioid, correct? Opioid.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Amanda.
Let's vote to motion.
Ms. Green?
Eleven ye, one nae.
Motion passes.
D6, Fund 101, no, excuse me, Fund 151, it's a General Debt Service Fund of 187,853.65, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Ms. Green?
I'm sorry, I thought I'd voted.
Ah, everybody gets behind sometime.
Eleven ye, one nae.
Motion passes.
D8, Fund 176, Highway Capital Project Funds, 586,030. Put that in the form of a motion.
D7. We have a motion?
Whoa, 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 skip D7.
Skip D7.
Skip D7.
Did I skip seven? I guess I did, then, I'm sorry about that, I'm human. Fund 154, Special Debt Service, 1,629,511, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Now, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Mine's not hitting, I hit it, it's just not hitting.
Eleven ye, one nae.
Motion passes.
Apologize for that. D8, Fund 176, Highway Capital Project Fund of 586,030. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion?
What, what's that 500 something for? What's that money for?
The 586?
Yeah, 586.
You all approved the spring paving project and this is the budget amendment to cover that.
Oh, this is, well, we've already approved it then.
Why we're approving it again? You're approving the funding now, you've already approved the paving project, just not the funding.
I thought that approved it, once you approve something, it's approved, no? No?
Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
D9, Fund 116, Solid Waste and Sanitation Fund of 109,050, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Eleven ye, one nae.
Motion passes.
Ten, uh, C, D10, Fund 131, Highway Department Fund of 25,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? C nine, let's vote to motion.
Twelve ye, zero nae.
Motion passes.
D11, Fund 101, Multiple Categories of 20,102.67, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Neesmith?
What is the money in each, and what are the categories that we're looking at?
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome, Wayne. So the categories are in yellow.
On what?
Are highlighted in yellow on your sheet. Tell her if it's not, so these are for ag extension.
Oh, it's on another sheet, I was just looking at the menu.
Oh, yeah, this is in, your actual budget amendment is in your packet too.
Okay, let me, I should've said see other page. Should've said see other page.
Okay, so while you're looking there, I can tell you it's for ag extension. It's to do with the tire tax grant and data processing and Chancery Court. There's four different departments I had to add in addition to the ones I had already done.
And that total, that total is twenty thousand, twenty...
Twenty...
One oh two sixty-seven.
I don't see it added together there anymore. Maybe I missed it. It ain't there. Twenty thousand one hundred and two, right?
Yeah.
And sixty-seven cents.
Sure, we gotta have that.
Now, let's vote to motion.
We have to do this off the board. I'm sorry. That's the...
That's the ag extension, public health, front dial the road.
Chancery Corps.
Yes.
Ed Nudry?
Yes.
Stan Harble?
Yes.
Bobby Pahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
It's twelve A.
Motion passes.
Go to nine E. Pharmacy Coverage Change to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do you have any questions or discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Twelve A, zero N.
Motion passes.
Nine F. It's Amendment Number One to the AIA Document A One-O-One dash two oh one seven with Construction Partners LLC in Hamlin County. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Second, Mr. Chairman. We have a second. Any questions? Ms. Green?
Quick question. I thought we had an amendment on that a month or two back. So why we've got another amendment on it? Was there something wrong with our contracts or how they were laid out? What was the reasoning?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and you are correct. There was an amendment in the previous language. All that was fine. This, this came from the state. The state hires a firm to audit the grant. And this, this auditor, which is Erneston Young, requested that we specifically show where the funding of Alternate One, which is for our county, is separate funding than the grant. They wanted that in language. It's, it was specified, everybody understood it, but they wanted more language that specified which part that the county was going to incur the funding and which part the grant was actually paying for. This was their, their, the Construction Partners, our contractor for that, had no issue with our contract. The auditor asked for this request.
So am I understanding you correctly, sir, that our contract needed to be clarified for the auditor?
Well, ma'am, yeah, I guess you could say that. Everybody else was good. The auditor came in on the backside and said we'd like to say this. And if you read it, simple language.
Thank you, sir.
It's just more money, right?
I don't think so.
That's staying?
No.
No more money. They're just separating it out of what's being wanted.
They just didn't have it in there.
We'll vote this off the board. Start the row.
Danny Carden?
Yes.
Thomas Stowey?
Yes.
Ed Nudry?
Yes.
Stan Harble?
Yes.
Bobby Pahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes. Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Long, now move to item ten. Did you request a speech?
I had it in my book, I guess.
Okay, we're good. We'll move to item ten, the Real Estate Committee. Chairman Mike Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ten A, we need to approve August tax sale. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Wayne Neesmith?
Mike, have you got a list of all that property for sale?
It was on, uh, yeah.
An update, an update copy of it?
Yeah, it's in, it's in folder.
Paid off or nothing? Yeah, last time you give it to me.
We got it.
Got it in the committee meeting.
Thank you. Send your book there, Wayne.
I'll vote to motion.
On the back.
Okay.
Quick question. So nothing has changed since our committee meeting? None of the listing has changed, I'm assuming by what you're saying? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Long?
We need the Real Estate Committee to see. Look at the list that I passed before them. And if there's a property in that list that would be deemed environmental, drainage, right away, something that we don't bid back in. That's all I need you to do is give me the notification of that. If we have to bid back in a property that has a no sale, then we don't bring for the Real Estate Committee to sell it. That would be the next step. So it's basically not a formality to approve the properties. Look at them and tell me if there's something wrong with one of them that can't be. We should not buy it back. If there's a no sale, but we don't run into no no sales.
What are you doing in that case, Scott?
Huh?
What do you do if you don't buy it back? What happens to the property?
Saying if there's not a bid.
Huh?
If there's a no bid, Wayne.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you.
I said if there's a no bid, then we have to buy it back in.
Yeah, we have to buy it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we don't have any no bids. In the past, we did.
Leave that microphone up. I'll hear you next time.
Because if we had a no bid, then we would bring it back before the committee and we would sell it. The county would sell it. Publication, et cetera. So it's just to look at the properties list and tell me if there's anything on it. There's a reason that there may not be. We should not purchase one if we have to.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Appreciate it. No other questions? We'll vote the motion.
Twelve A, zero N.
And that motion passes. That's all we have on that. Couple of reminders. The July twenty-fifth committee meetings are on Monday, July fourteenth, five o'clock. The commission meeting, July twenty-fourth, also at five o'clock. Commissioners also keep in mind, and the public, tomorrow at eleven o'clock, the new health department will have its groundbreaking. So if you want to stop by to see that, you all are welcome. All minds clear? We are adjourned.